I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting this evening. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, April 1st, 2019. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the town's cable information channel, 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pretem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Corns.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, we had scheduled Pastor Kevin Thompson from Watershed Fellowship, who could, at the last minute, could not join us, so I'd like to ask Councilmember Todd Corns if he would lead us in tonight's invocation for tonight's meeting.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we pause in front of you right now as a council, as a group of men and women, and we stop and ask wisdom. Your Bible says that if any man asks of wisdom, you would give it to him graciously and generously and not chastise that request. So we do ask for wisdom. We want to live with wisdom. We want to lead with wisdom. We want to do it with charity and generosity, equity and fairness, and we greatly desire that you would bless our town, bless our area, that you would give us peace and prosperity, that you would give us a great community. We do pray right now for the family down in Columbia that is grieving that horrible tragedy with their daughter, who was murdered this past weekend. Father, we ask for lots of grace and mercy for them, and we ask that you would build justice and fairness and equity in our community, and that righteousness would increase and evil like that would decrease, not because of councils, but because of the hearts of men bending towards what is right. And so we grieve with those folks, but we also believe in your grace and your mercy. So Father, do all these things for us, not because we're good, but because you're gracious. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Todd. I think I saw some Boy Scouts in the crowd tonight. If you would not mind, everyone, please stand. If y'all would lead us in the Pledge of Belief.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. We'll report on our executive session for this evening. Tonight, an executive session, we had two legal issues. One issue regarding pending litigation, and one issue was advice regarding an agenda item. We had two contractual issues. We had a downtown economic development issue, and we had two issues regarding sewer contracts. We also had one personnel issue, was position timing. No vote was taken in executive session. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
(Inaudible).
We have a motion by Councilmember Manus and a second by Councilmember Baker. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Deletions on the agenda tonight. I believe we have one deletion on tonight's agenda. We will pull...
New business number nine.
New business number nine. Thank you, Councilmember Manus. Hearing no others, that's the only one. Madam Clerk, at this time, we will move into presentations. Our first presentation this evening will be a proclamation read by Councilmember Kathy Manus. Ms. Doris Green, if you would not mind, join us at the microphone. This is for the proclamation for the Census 2020 Kickoff Day. And Ms. Green is here with us. She's with the U.S. Census Bureau. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington declaring April the 1st, 2019, as Census 2020 Kickoff Day, whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is mandated by the Constitution to conduct a count of the population, and will conduct that count on April the 1st, 2020, and whereas the Census provides the basis for reapportioning congressional seats, redistricting, and distributing more than $675 million in federal funds annually to support states, counties, and communities' vital programs, and whereas an accurate census count is vital to our community and residents' well-being, impact in education, transportation, employment, healthcare, business growth, and housing needs, and whereas council has appointed the advisory committee to serve as the Town of Lexington's Complete Count Committee, and whereas the Census provides an historic opportunity to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy, and whereas the information collected by the Census is confidential and protected by law. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, that April the 1st, 2019, is hereby declared Census 2020 Kickoff Day in the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, and all citizens are encouraged to commit to supporting the U.S. Census Bureau to ensure a full and accurate count in 2020. Proclaim this first day of April, 2019.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, on behalf of George Grandy, who is Regional Director, I accept this proclamation, and I must say that you're joining other cities across the nation on this very important day for the kickoff for the Census. April 1st is Census Day, and so next year, you will be receiving your census forms, and we know that each one of you, along with the council, will be filling those forms out and sending them back, so that we will have the best scout ever in South Carolina.
Very good, Ms. Green.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Green, thanks so much for being with us, and you travel safe going to your next meeting and back home to Atlanta, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. Ms. Lyle.
I'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the folks from the advisory committee that we invited tonight, or that if they want to stand up and be... We at least appreciate you being here. I know several of you are in here, so thanks so much, the members of the advisory committee.
Y'all want to stand up? Anybody want to say anything? Good.
We're glad to be here, and we are going to be working on that census report, so we know what we're supposed to do.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Our next presentation this evening will be a proclamation read by Councilmember Ron Williams. It's a proclamation for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Mr. Troy Fight, if you wouldn't mind, join us at the microphone. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe Ryland Rogers is here as well. Ms. Katherine Tucker couldn't make it tonight.
(Inaudible) standing here alone myself?
He said yes.
Get him, Ryland. Whereas Katherine Ray Tucker, a three-year survivor of acute lymphoblastic leukemia currently in remission, has been awarded the title of 2019 Girl of the Year for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and whereas Ryland Rogers, a three-year-old currently in treatment for acute lymphoblastic leukemia, has been awarded the title of 2019 Boy of the Year for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and whereas Troy Fight, a five-year prostate cancer survivor, and his team Fight for a Cure, have accepted the challenge to join the competition to raise funds for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society in honor of local blood cancer survivors and seek the title of the 2019 Man of the Year, which is awarded to the candidate whose team raises the most funds, and whereas, since it began in 1990, the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Man or Woman of the Year event has raised $266 million and helped LLS invest more than $1 billion in research to cure blood cancers. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that Katherine Ray Tucker, LLS Girl of the Year, Ryan Rogers, LLS Boy of the Year, and Troy Fight, LLS Man of the Year candidate, are hereby honored and recognized for the roles that are being played as ambassadors for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society to bring awareness and raise funds in efforts to beat the blood cancers once and for all. Claim this first day of April, 2019.
Yay! Way good, Ryland. Thank you. Ryland, your Boy of the Year? Yes! That is great. Congratulations.
Ryland is currently in maintenance, which means, I was talking to his mother earlier, which means he takes chemotherapy by pill once a day, and then once a month has to go and have a back stick, but he is in maintenance at this point, so he's not... Just once a month instead of the time it was before. Catherine couldn't be here tonight. Her mother had some surgery, and it was a little difficulty getting her here, so... But we appreciate it. I just ask that if you see me, there's other candidates running. There are nine individuals. This is important stuff. Leukemia and Lymphoma Society is one of the few organizations that's actually putting boots on the ground. In 2017, 2018 alone, 34 of 39 drugs were actually put into use, and the beautiful thing is, a lot of the stuff we do with LLS is not just blood cancer. It goes over into other areas. So if you see me around town, my campaign slogan is "Give me a dollar." Of course, I'll always take more. We're doing this until May the 16th. I ask that you please find me on Facebook. Help out. This is a boy that should be playing baseball, not having to worry about cancer treatment, so thank you very much.
Very good. Congratulations. Good luck, Troy.
Get over here on this side, so they can hold that for you. That's yours. This is yours. All right. Stand over here next to me. By the way, Ron is a member of my team, too, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy, I have a check, and I challenge others in the Town of Lexington to do the same.
Oh, I like that. I like that. Very good. 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 Very good.[822.13]
and hidden epidemic which crosses racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic boundaries and endangers our most precious resource and greatest responsibility, our children, and whereas child abuse can have lifelong psychological, emotional, and physical consequences for victims and costs our nation billions of dollars in medical expense, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, and sick leave, and whereas the Dickerson Children's Advocacy Center in Lexington saw over 600 new child clients in 2018 who had suffered physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, or had been a witness to violence, and whereas preventing child abuse in our state can only occur with programs that strengthen families, educate parents and caregivers, and provide positive development of children that allows them to succeed. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the town of Lexington that April 2019 is hereby declared Child Abuse Prevention Month, and all citizens are urged to dedicate themselves to protect the quality of life for every child throughout the year, dated this first day of April 2019.
Very good, Aaron, thank you for being with us.
Thank you. On behalf of everyone at the Dickerson Children's Advocacy Center, we appreciate the opportunity to raise awareness about something that's so quieted and closeted because of the stigma around it. A third of victims never report, so there are a number of children out there that need our, need services, and hopefully through the April events that we have, and if you check out our website, there'll be more information about it, we can help take this painful experience they're going through and give them a place of healing.
Very good, thank you so much. At this time, I will have a vision plan update. Vision plan update for April 2019. Spring is in full bloom at the Ice House Amphitheater, and Friday, this Friday, April 5th at 6:00 PM, Tartan Day South will have a band here live in the Ice House Amphitheater called Celtic Promotion in concert. Tickets are on sale now, you can get those at icehouseamphitheater.com. Lexington Live, the Free Concert Series begins Thursday evenings at 6:30. The first concert will be April 11th with The Embers. Following that is April 18th, Whiskey Run, April 25th, Finesse, May 2nd, The Tams, May 9th, Tokyo Joe, and May 23rd, The Root Doctors. Remember, those concerts are free and they all begin at 6:30 on Thursday nights. Our first ticketed event will be Friday, April 12th, 2019, doors open at 6:00 PM. It will be Noah Guthrie in concert. Tickets are now on sale, again at icehouseamphitheater.com. On April 13th, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM will be the Barbecue and Blues Event, and tickets are on sale now. Saturday, April 27th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM is Kids' Day of Lexington, and that will be held at the Town Hall and the Ice House Amphitheater. That is from 10 o'clock in the morning to 2:00 in the afternoon. Saturday, May 11th, from 6:00 to 10:00 will be the Lexington Wine Walk. Tickets are on sale now. Friday, May 17th, doors open at 6:00 PM. Coming back for a second round, Sister Hazel, tickets are on sale now. For more information on all of these concerts and all the events at the Ice House Amphitheater, please visit our website, icehouseamphitheater.com. That is the vision plan for, update for April 2019. At this time, we will have a traffic update from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Jenny Lane Dual Right Turn Lane has opened to traffic and has experienced good results. Final striping and completion of the project is expected in the next few weeks. The I-20 exit ramp work has been delayed but is expected to be complete by June. The South Church Street sidewalk is nearly complete as well, with only a minor utility delay at the corner of Robert Street. Continue to be aware of traffic delays and lane closures around this area. The Traffic Committee meeting for March was canceled and has not yet been rescheduled. Finally, if you're aware of a traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or a pothole that needs repair, please call 358-7273.
Very good, thank you, Mayor Protam. At this time, we will move into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Because the first two items are in a neighborhood that I'm currently working in, I will turn this, this meeting over to the Mayor Protam and have her handle the meeting from this point forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first public reading is final reading of an, public hearing is final reading of an ordinance annexed Lexington County Tax Map Number 003300-04-11 located in Sterling Bridge subdivision. Does anyone here want to speak to that? The next one is final reading of an ordinance annexed in Lexington County Tax Map Number 003300-04-089 located in the Sterling Bridge subdivision. Does anyone want to speak to that? Do I do the next one?
Thank you. Item number three, final reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the Kershaw County Sheriff's Department. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 003300-04-111 located in Sterling Bridge subdivision. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
I will.
I'll take it.
Yep.
Thank you, Council. Old Cherokee Investors owns 19.37 acres located at the rear of the Sterling Bridge subdivision and has petitioned to annex the property. Faces four and five of the subdivision with 53 additional lots are planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone protected residential too. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended the same zoning for this property. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker made a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Item number two is annexation of Lexington County Tax Map Number 3300-04-089 located in the Sterling Bridge subdivision. And Todd Carnes, we?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Mongo Homes Properties LLC owns 36.5 acres located at the rear of Sterling Bridge subdivision and has petitioned to annex the property. The remaining phases of the subdivision are planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone protected residential too. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended the same zoning for this property. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Carnes made a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis seconded it. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Riley.
Mr. Hanson, this one does not detail how many houses are going to be built on the 36 acres, do you, do we know that number?
We have not been given the bonded plat for the final phases yet, so we don't know exactly what the number is. The total number for the subdivision is 225, what is, what is planned. That's why I didn't have that number to put in your package.
And how many total acres is this subdivision?
Wow.
If this is 36 and 19...
There's three other phases, I don't, I don't have that information. They're currently under construction.
Okay. You could email me that, I'd just like to see how it's following inside, how many we're putting on acre?
I was gonna jump in, when you said, the 225 numbers for all five phases, you just don't know how they break up, phase by phase?
Yes, sir, I don't have that information.
Okay. And phases one and two are complete?
They're still under construction. It's a total of 200, it is actually in your package, 250 lots with 107 acres.
Okay.
On all five, with all five. The breakdown is in your package right here on the...
Two and a half acre.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Madam clerk, just to make sure, in the record that I recuse myself from old business number one and two. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams, final reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the Kershaw County Sheriff's Department. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lexington Police Department is entering into a mutual aid agreement with Kershaw County Sheriff's Office. The proposed agreement is attached. I'd like to make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
Councilmember Manis seconds that motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Moving right into new business, our first item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-04-181 located at 339 Cherokee Trail. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tanner Kevin Connolly owns one acre located at 339 Cherokee Trail and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being constructed on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone protected residential, and Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission will review this annexation during their April meeting to recommend a zoning and road clarification, classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam seconds the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. First reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with North Myrtle Beach. Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Lexington Police Department is entering into a mutual aid agreement with the City of North Myrtle Beach Police Department. This agreement is for Memorial Day Bike Weekend. The proposed agreement is attached, and, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for a first reading approval.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Manis seconds the motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carnes.
This is probably a question out of ignorance, but we do these every year. Are these only annual agreements? Do we not do multi-year agreements, or can you only do them annually for some reason?
Mayor and Council, the reason for these proposed, updating them every year for the Memorial Day weekend, because it's a special order just for that time, they have allotted tourist money for those guys, and that's why they update those agreements. Like the Kershaw County one, we had a new sheriff, so that's why we updated the mutual aid on that one, but the Memorial Day Bike, Bike weekends, they're Pacific, and that's why we're down there. So that's why we update those every year. Even though in the, in the contract it says it lasts for two years, they want it updated for every year, just in case something happens.
Got it.
Very good, thank you, Chief. Hold on, I think you have one more.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Manis.
Chief, I will be down there in North Myrtle Beach at that time, and I will feel a lot safer knowing that my town Lexington Police are there. In fact, last year, on the news, on the Friday night before that, of that weekend, it showed our police department's car there, so I'm glad to know that, that they're gonna be there 'cause it's a mess down there that weekend.
And I hope you didn't jinx us this year coming up, so.
Me too.
Thank you, Chief. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston, first reading of an ordinance for a budget amendment. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The foreign budget adjustment is requested for the Transportation Department, reduce personnel, personnel services and transportation, $64,000. Add to transportation capital outlay, fusion splicer, $5,000, optical time domain reflectometer. Okay, $9,000, and a traffic management control for $50,000. Net changes to appropriations equals zero, and I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Protam makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. I really thought that was a April Fool's joke, but, a reflectometer. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. First reading of an amendment to the Animal Control Ordinance. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Get to that.
Four.
Yeah, there's a lot of pages on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That new business number four?
Yes.
I think that was mine.
Yes. Yes, that's Todd right there, but mine.
Okay. Well, let Councilmember Carnes read that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lexington County amended its animal control ordinance in January, and the town needs to adopt the changes, so they may be enforced in the town limits. The main changes include the following, the mandatory sterilization and microchipping of animals impounded at the shelter due to violation of restraint and confinement, managed intake for owner-surrendered dogs, this allows implementation of alternatives to immediate surrender of owned dogs by offering service referrals and surrender by appointment, and Lexington County Animal Services will no longer accept owner-surrendered cats. The request from Lexington County is attached. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams seconds the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. You want to read this one?
I'll read it.
Our next item of new business, number five, first reading of an ordinance approving purchase of property parcel one. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town has reached an agreement in principle to purchase a parcel of property with the town, within the town limits. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, the property and terms will be identified once the deed has been executed. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams, first reading of an ordinance approving purchase of property parcel number two. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The town has reached an agreement in principle to purchase a parcel of property within the town limits. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, the property and terms will be identified once the deed has been executed. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle seconds the motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Paul, do we have any idea about when it would be available, just so folks watching on TV can know, the timeframe of when this information might be available?
I would expect the second week of May.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Resolution for SCDOT Highway Improvement Plan. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. SCDOT has asked the town to adopt the attached resolution dealing with relocation of utility lines in connection with the US-1 over I-20 Highway Improvement Plan. The resolution exempts the utility companies from any ad valorem taxes for new construction of utility lines in the right of way which are being constructed as a result of the project. I make a motion for council approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes seconds the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. Midlands River Coalition Funding. Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town of Lexington became a member of the Midlands Rivers Coalition in 2016, sampling the Salute Abroad and Congaree Rivers to ensure public safety with the water quality. We are now entering the third year of activities and will also be installing signage at 21 locations along the rivers. These signs will be advising the public, either telling them about a problem, or advising them to go to the website to find out about the water quality after each sampling period. Sampling will occur weekly from May until the end of September. The town will be responsible for controlling a dynamic sign at the J.B. Barker Landing, formerly known as the Hope Ferry Landing, in case of an advisory due to high bacteria levels. We have been asked to pledge $2,500 to continue the functions of the coalition. The Central Midland Council of Governments will still be controlling the funds for the coalition, and, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for council approval to pledge some amount.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion, do I have a second? Councilmember Williams seconds the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. That concludes our business items for this evening. At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the mayor and council, we extend our deepest sympathy to the Kaufman family and the loss of Mr. Raymond Kaufman. He was a true leader of this community and will be missed by many. As the mayor mentioned in the vision plan update, there are lots of concerts and events at the amphitheater this spring, starting with the Tartan Day Concert this weekend and The Embers next Thursday. So please check out icehouseamphitheater.com for all the details. There, there are several town boards meeting in the month of April. The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet this Thursday at 5:30 here in council chambers. The Planning Commission will meet April 17th at 8:00 AM, also here in the council chambers. If you would like to get involved with one of the town's boards or commissions, go to the town's webpage and complete a boards and commissions application. There are several that have vacancies, so we'd love your involvement. Council will meet again on April 15th at 6:00 PM for council's work session meeting held in the Eli Mack Room. Last week, the town named a new section of Virginia Hilton Park as the Pat Jeffcoat Serenity Park. This is the first phase of the Virginia Hilton Park renovation built from community donations. Ms. Pat is very deserving of this honor in that she is a significant contributor to the town's beautification efforts by volunteering her time on several projects. I'd also like to take the opportunity to point out that Ms. Hazel has been leading that effort and is doing a fantastic and phenomenal job, and we are extremely grateful for everything that you're doing there. We are also taking applications for two great events in May. Please email Lexington Wine Walk. I think that's not right. I'm gonna read it as it is, though. Please email LexingtonWineWalk@gmail, is at gmail dot com? To participate in Lexington's annual wine walk on May 11th, held at the amphitheater. And if you would like to be a vendor at this year's farmer's market, please go to the town's webpage to get an application. This year, the market has moved to the Ice House Amphitheater, so you will want to be included. If you have any questions, please call 358-7275. And I'd also take the liberty and say that we are looking to make that a fun and exciting thing, and we welcome the community's involvement, ideas, anything that you've got for us, we want to make this thing exciting, so please get involved. And finally, it is Councilmember Kathy Manis's birthday this Friday, and so we'd like to wish her a happy birthday coming up, and, happy birthday.
Thank you.
And then, the final thing that I would add is just condolences from the town of Lexington, from the town council, from the folks, everyone here, just for the family of Samantha Josephson. As Councilmember Carnes prayed, just ask for an abundance of grace and mercy and the peace that passes all understanding, and I know there's a lot of students down there that are going through it right now, and you guys are in our thoughts and prayers, so just wanted to add that as well, and, thank you for watching your town council in action tonight.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
I'd just like to say that the proceeds from the wine walk go to remodeling the Virginia Hilton Park.
Very good.
Donations for it.
Yeah, all the past proceeds have gone through beautification efforts throughout the town, so we really appreciate it and really get behind that event, 'cause it all, all the money goes right back into the town. Anyone else? Happy birthday, Kathy.
Thank you.
Enjoy your day.
Thank you.
Any questions from the news media tonight? Any questions from the public regarding tonight's agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to add? That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, April 1st, 2019. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during this week, and a video will be available on the town's website at Without objection, we are adjourned.